Board of Education leading to order.
So, to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Thank you, Chris. Just a reminder that if there are any board members that have run anything out of the agenda, you just, you know, which I myself can let you know where that will end and how that will go. And with that, I would entertain and wish to put to an end to agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion from Tracy, a second from Rick. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A full same song. Motion carries. Our actions on the minutes from last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on June 23rd, 2025 as presented. Second.
So, motion from Rick, a second from Ben. Any questions on the minute? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A full same song. And then, a nation one for vouchers.
I'll move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $1,582.39 as presented.
Second.
Motion from Tracy, a second from John. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A full same song. Motion carries. And with that, we will move on to comments. We got two people who would wish to speak tonight. I will, a couple of reminders. You have three minutes and Gavin has a tenor so I can see. And Marson will also be helping to make sure we stick to the three-minute time limit. Only items that are on the agenda for tonight may be spoken to. And I see both of these have to do with open enrollment. Board members will not be responding. We do not respond. We do not address your concerns. We appreciate you coming and sharing them with us, but we will not be giving you any response or feedback on those. When you first come up, and we're going to ask you to come up to the podium because that's where the microphone is, remind you that this is recorded. It's live streamed tonight. So, just keep that in mind and speak facing that computer so we get your voice. Where are we on there? Start with your name and then with three minutes. And we will start with Kelsey Zimorski. Did I say that right?
Yes, thank you. Hello, my name is Kelsey Zimorski and I am a volunteer, current Red Hawks, but a future Red Hawks. My husband Matt cannot be here tonight as he is watching a TV while gaming, so I'm speaking on the Capitol House. I need you to express my concerns regarding the recent ongoing changes to the school placement for open enrollment students in Milton's elementary schools, both for the upcoming school year and in future years. While I understand all first and second grade open enrollment students at Milton East are being reassigned to other elementary schools for the 2025-2026 school year, will given what informed by superintendent comment that many factors were considered in making these decisions. It does not appear that those considerations were applied accurately. It seems that any student open enrolled at Milton East in first or second grade in the 2024-25 school year are being moved regardless of individual circumstances. Families are not only struggling to find new after-school care programs and transportation, but also struggling with emotional needs of their students. When we were first notified of these changes, our children were placed at Milton West. Our daughter, who will be on fifth, second grade, is now accusing her third elementary school placement. That stability and relationship she has built will be disrupted once again. We've also learned that Milton West is eliminating a third-grade classroom. And as a result, her grade students then will be moved to Milton East or possibly to other schools. This raises serious concerns about the district's long-term planning. If second-grade classes at West are being expanded while third-grade classes are being eliminated, what changes can we expect for the following year? We also learned while talking to any other concerned parents, that a second-grade student from Milton West, whose family has been there for many years, is now being moved to Milton East for the upcoming school year. So, while all open enrollment students going into second grade with the faculty at Milton East are being moved to other schools, a student from Milton West is being sent to second grade at East. This leads me to believe that many students are being shuffled around without much consideration beside where they can fit for the upcoming school year. Third-grade students take the SATs and forward exam. And those results contribute to the performance evaluations of our schools. When students are removed from a familiar trusted learning environment and placed into a new setting, how can we reasonably expect them to perform well on these data assessments than any other academic year ago? Furthermore, the data from these test scores would be difficult to analyze as the students taking their exam at East may only go there for their third-grade year. How will the district be able to make informed decisions so they don't know what's working or not where to move at each elementary school? We are deeply concerned about the frequency of school transitions occurring with our district's elementary schools. Our children are being offered from their comfort zones that very little friends and distance from teachers who help create a secure and supportive learning environment. We worry that this pattern will continue each year and we firmly believe that such instability is not in the best interest of our young learners. We chose to enroll our children in the Milton School District because we believe it offers the highest quality education. Our children have fragged at Milton East and as a weekly volunteer at the school, I've had the opportunity to serve firsthand while actively offered.
Kelsey, I'm going to ask you to stop. You made it just a little over three minutes. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Next, we have Sarah Peterson.
Okay, my name is Sarah Peterson and I am the mom of two, going on three kiddos going to school this next coming year at home. We were previously at East and we have been there since my daughter was in 4K. Initially, when we moved into Milton, we wanted the school, to move toward the school. And then, our family got too big, we moved out of the district, just lately. So, I guess I wanted to express a concern similar to Kelsey about how we were feeling about the move from Milton East now to where I'm in Harmony. But initially, we were given the choice to West. My daughter Molly struggles with anxiety and has made immense improvements over the year. Milton East has been incredible with helping her and allowing her to grow and really challenging her. Of course, she's not crying and we got off the school anymore and she actually walked up to Milton. When we were notified of the change, it, you know, as a mom, made me really concerned for her. And while I can appreciate kids have resiliency and kids think about change, we continue to see, you know, more things that you throw in as this layer goes on. I want to preface that, like, we are doing all the things we can do to help her transition. Great, so we successfully entered her new school at Harmony. But I do bring up the same concerns that Kelsey brought it up with. What does this mean for the following year? Is this something that just because we're open enrolled, my kiddos are going to have to experience again another elementary school shift after second grade and third grade until we get to Northside? So, I just like urge you guys to, you know, provide more information, take into account that there are little lives in there, a little bit, you know, their world is school and their social, emotional quality is incredibly important. And I'm really concerned for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. We'll move on to item number 2A, Red Hawk highlights.
There's a few different things that I want to highlight. Since our last meeting, summer school, our enrichment for summer school sessions ended. They wrapped up on July 3rd. They're a very successful summer school. We have also, since our last meeting, I think we gave an update that the high school, FBLA, was traveling to Anaheim for National Leadership Conference that took place. And all four of our students had outstanding presentations. And especially congratulations to Emma Stanky, who was a graduate in 2025, who placed in the top 15 people in the nation at that competition. So, congratulations to Emma. With the recent Jefferson County Fair and the upcoming Rock County Fair, we have a lot of students taking part. We want to congratulate all our Red Hawks who participated and will participate in their respective events. And we have a number of staff members who are working with our FFA programs on preparation and presentation at the fair. And then, just yesterday, Milton High School alone, Gavin Colleen was drafted in the first round by the San Francisco Giants. So, not very often that a graduate from our high school is drafted in professional sports. So, congratulations to Gavin. In the end of June, we had 12 members of our admin team learn together in a conference with other Wisconsin teams. The conference was titled Cultivating a Culture of Excellence for All. And some of the key takeaways from that conference included the importance of having effective universal instruction in every classroom, the need for meaningful professional development throughout the year, including both our professional development days, but also our work there. And making sure we have common expectations and timely feedback for educators from their supervisors. So, those are all things that we'll be working on, putting some things in place that we learned in the past and continuing that conversation. And then, earlier today, we had our monthly admin team meeting. And the highlight was that our admin team was joined by representatives from the city of Milton, police department and the city for tabletop exercise on school safety and rehabilitation. So, it was a great opportunity for our team to kind of talk through a few different scenarios, how we would handle situations where students needed to be evacuated from school for wide variety of different potential reasons, and then unify with their parents. In situations like this, the safety of our students and staff is always a top priority. And we utilize a protocol that's also used by most of the other school districts in Rock County, which really helps when law enforcement is involved because then we can get help from both county law enforcement, the sheriff's department, but also as different local police departments help out in other communities. If there is a situation, they're familiar with the scenario. So, we're really grateful for our partners in the city and across all of these families for the collaborative work that we had today. And I just want to thank everyone who participated. I want to thank Ruliga Boer and Sheri Youngberg and Carrie Clavak, who did represent it. And then, also Carrie Proplan of the event. So, it was a great activity.
Great. Yeah, just a quick one. I want to thank you and the admin team and the little Milton minutes that you're throwing out there on social media. It has helped me to remind my driving student that you cannot park in Schilber. So, I saw that one. And the physical reminders for athletic registration. So, those quick little thank you for helping me remember over the summer minutes are very appreciated, at least to me. And I'm sure to others in the public as well, so.
Great. 3A, Annual Health Services Report.
All right. Okay, I'm Melissa. This is Shelley, where the district is here in the Milton School District. So, we're contracted to report healthcare and we are going to kind of quickly give you an overview of all of the wonderful things we accomplished this next week. So, I don't know. Okay, perfect. Okay, so, I feel weird that I can't see it. I'm like, I'm talking, but I feel weird that I can't see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but when you do, close to the mic.
You're perfect for your mic. Okay, perfect. Okay, good. All right, so, as in college support healthcare, we've served as the school nurses in the district for the past three years. The 2024-25 school year, we were contracted for 80 hours per week, 40 total, which is 3,140 hours for the school year. The district also had two health aides, which were also 40 hours per week. So, we're grateful for their help that they provided us this school year. So, the four of us worked together. All right, under support healthcare's school nurse program, which is my kind of goal that it tails, there are 17 nurses in 10 area school districts that are contracted to provide nursing services. Support healthcare school nurses for areas with the opportunity to collaborate with one another, share resources, mentor and access by helping community resources, really has been an asset, especially as newer school nurses. Support healthcare, we require our doctor, Catherine Miss Swinney, which we're out of the front, provides us with emergency orders and things like that. All right, this next slide, this is just a diagram of the school nurse and practice framework. This gives the definition of what defines a school nurse. Our role and goal has always been about the health and safety of the students and staff in our district, doing what we can to support them to be healthy, safe, and in the classroom starting to learn. And then, this slide just goes over the statutes of the state of Wisconsin has in place that provide legal guidance regarding the type of health services schools must provide to meet the health and safety of students and students. The statute listed here just states that school services are required to provide and the nursing services. So, this slide talks about the student presentations and education that was provided this school year. So, you can see on here, we were able to provide several different areas that we provided education directly into our classroom, where Shelley and myself did the teachings ourselves, which is something we're super proud of. That's what we love about this, is being able to get into classrooms. So, that shows all of the different numbers, the amount of times that we were able to teach and the things that we taught our classrooms, including living healthy lifestyles, teaching the benefits of developing healthy habits, and helping wellness for our students. We're always looking for opportunities to teach, so if there's any, I think that's our goal. And then, what we got here. Additionally, school nursing provides staff training for Safe Medication Administration, basic first aid, CPR first aid training for emergency heart association and stuff. We also train a medical emergency response team in each building to respond to medical events, provide care and administer emergency medications if necessary. Picture on the screen are just the medications that we do provide education on for students with emergency medications. Slide eight here, so this shows all of the training of staff that was provided this school year. So, you can see the number of staff members in our district that are trained on all of those different categories of medications. So, that training is all provided by the two of us on that left-hand table. The right-hand table are all of other trainings that we provide, the amount of people in the district that are trained in CPR first aid, stop the lead, diabetes, and so on. Those are all of the numbers of the staff members that are actually trained by us. Here we have a list of student health concerns that impact our district with a total of around 3,465 students this year. 20% of those students have reported to have one or more chronic health conditions, many of which might require emergency intervention, emergency medications that we talked about. This number is based on parent-provided information as well as some doctor's orders that we received. So, the top diagnoses are listed here. Again, this is just the parent reported, so these numbers may be lower, so it's just what we are aware of. ADHD, asthma, diabetes type 1 and 2, seizures, severe allergies, mental health. If you believe, we mentioned this last year, so that the mental health number should be much larger than that number. So, this slide, this talks about health office visits. So, you can see in the first column there, Elementary Northside, the amounts that they had last year versus the amount this year. There is some discrepancies on some of those. Some of those numbers are lower in this year than they were last year. A big part of why we think that is, is the amount of education that we provided to staff on things that they can do before sending kiddos down to the office for a health office visit. So, we think that is paying off, that we are doing those things. We're also providing band-aids at the front desk so kids can just walk in, grab a band-aid and walk out. They don't necessarily have to be seen by an office staff person or ourself or a health aide if they just need a band-aid. So, we're happy that those numbers are improving a little bit because that's good. That means that more kids are healthy and safe in classrooms. Here we have a breakdown of medication doses given in the district. Note that students in Milton High School are allowed to self-care OTC medication compared to normal. So, those doses would not be recorded. We compared again both last school year and the 2024-25 school year. There is a jump where there's a difference between the scheduled medications. Those are medications that we give on a daily basis on the schedule. And we break it down into as needed medications, like Tylenol, open, inhalers, insulin, and emergency medications, which they include both the ones to. This slide talks about the amount of health plans we wrote, the number of IEP meetings we attended by cohorts. It says the number of action and emergency plan, plans that we wrote for students, the number of students that have medicaid billing services, and that the number of staff that have the diabetes DaxD given. We don't routinely give them because of our partnership with Edgerton. Most of the time, they can get them through there. But that's just a comparison chart of the amount of plans and meetings that we attended this year. Please move over to the immunization information for the students in the district. Our compliance rate this year was 98.57%. And with that, students who meet and were required to fill in the 92.3%. And it lists any students with waivers, religious, or personals, or health waivers that we give. The next slide goes through the amount of, the number of students that were vision and hearing screened this year. This is something that is completed by Shelley and I. Vision and hearing, vision screenings are helped by the Edgerton Lions Club and Milton Lions Club, but mostly done by us. Hearing screenings are completely done by our staff ourselves. This goes through the amount of students that were referred, the number of students that came back with new prescription for glasses, and same for hearing, you can see in the two boxes. And additionally, we coordinate with Wisconsin Seals Lab who help connect to provide dental services and screenings, including exams, feelings, fluorine treatments, and referrals. Students have to stay in addition for 391, 435 for seal, and 64 referrals for care. There is a little note at the bottom there that I just wanted to point out. The Seals Lab provided $164,227 in free dental services this year to our Milton School District kids. So, that's huge. Those kids would not have gotten dental care without our partnership with Seals Lab. This slide shows our communicable diseases. So, we are required to keep track of the amount of communicable diseases in our district. And you can see those numbers reflected there. All right, we'd like to go over our goals for the, for this school year. And we did, we were able to accomplish all three goals that we listed at the beginning of the floor. As you saw on the previous slide, we did have a big jump in our involvement with the 5049 meeting. Coordinating with case managers and student services to sit at those tables more often. And also, we did develop a list of Michael directions to students with anxiety that presents to the health room. We put a calling quarter in the health office in the high school and various other things, vision, things like that. Education on how we can assist students with anxiety that presents to the health office. And we continue to work on streamlining field trip numbers and procedure. We've got documented worldwide to better school has the same procedure, the same form of fill-out for field trips, making sure that those come to our desks so we can make sure all healthcare, health-related things are addressed for field trips. This next slide is a huge project that we completed this year. So, Project Adam is a project that we use to make all of our schools heart-safe schools. Every school in our district this year did obtain this heart-safe certification. What that involves is Shelley and I doing a lot of planning, running emergency response drills, having people trained in CPR first aid, and feedback and various of other things. Making sure our AEDs are up to date and all of our stuff we have in our can, all of these things. All of our schools have banners in them that show that we're super proud of this certification. And these pictures that you can see are pictures of our emergency response teams in all of our different buildings. And for next year's goals for the 25-26 school year. First goal, we'd like to implement strategies for preventing and spreading infectious diseases within the school community by working with the Rock County Health Department to create a new, the safe tracking procedures. We're looking closely at that. That's going to be a new thing. Rock County and then is going to be involved, I'm sure, coordinating that. So, it could help track and keep rooms cleaner, cause of active community that's going around, things like that. Second, we're going to address students' emotional and mental health needs, providing support referrals when necessary to appropriate support staff within the district. And then, we would like to be a little bit more creative this next school year and create a quarterly health newsletter to go out to keep district chapters informed of trends, information, and educational topic. What questions?
I just want to say thanks. Thanks for sharing and thanks for what you do to keep our students and our staff healthy and safe. Every year I see this and I'm amazed that what you do, the numbers really jump out at me. So, thanks a lot. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Thank you both and your teams for what you do for the district. One question I have is on slide 10. The visits in the middle school, it's like a 500 decrease. I get the band-aids in elementary, I guess, in Northside, but 500 seems an awful lot in the middle school. Is that just, is there anything that triggers that? Just out of curiosity.
I don't know. I'm not really sure about that call. We did have a student that had a lot of, one of the pride pillars that had a lot of offices. It was a question was on the middle high school. So, that could be a part of it. It could be that not all, you know, the data is only as good as what's out there. So, maybe the office isn't as well documented, or what may have just been a minor thing. It was documented in the previous year and not this year. We did do that education about, like, well, the kids just come down and to have a self-care station, get what they need, and then go back to us.
That must be very helpful for you guys as well to.
Well, for sure. And also, I have this system in the office that are those buildings for us to inspire the everyone in the district, so.
And great job getting all the schools certified. It's amazing.
Super proud, yeah. It's a lot of work that it's for us to do that. We're super proud of it.
I got a question on page 10 as well. Could you explain what MERC calls are? And does that always end in an ambulance or vice versa? Does an ambulance call always involve the MERC team?
Okay, so, a medical emergency response team, that's a MERC call. And so, it does not always require an ambulance visit. If an ambulance is called, it does always require a MERC call. So, that's something that's super important to us as we do a lot of training with our MERC teams on how to respond to these medical emergencies within their buildings. So, no, sometimes it can be something like, let me think of an example of when we would call 911 and get hurt or. I mean, maybe.
I have an example of good.
We had a flight drive at the high school.
Oh, there's good examples.
Yeah, we had a flight drive at the high school and you know how that would be. The students, they age in class, MERC call, MERC did call, you call the main office. We have all the buildings trained on how to do that in the classroom. And we go to the room, assure the student is safe, and we get them on the phone. Yeah, another case was like, a kid's out on the playground and falls, and there's a questionable arm, let's say, that's injured. They would call the MERC team, they would call one of us who are in the building. We would come and assess the situation. And then, if we, you know, don't think that it's broken or maybe just needs an X-ray, but could go home and tell our dad, then we would make that call versus calling.
Thank you. I have a question on slide six, just to clarity. I think I know what it is. What's Tar Wars?
Oh, so Tar Wars is a presentation that I do to all of the sixth graders that talks about smoking, tobacco, vaping. We bring in a set of pig lungs and I show them the healthy pig lungs versus the smoking pig lungs. They see how they inflate differently and they can see the discoloration, they can see all the different things. I also have a big tray of different things that are, half of it's tobacco products and half of it is candy. And they have to distinguish the difference between the two of them because of how we market tobacco products and how kids see them and see like, oh, this baby's skills looks very similar to this thing. Or how they project bakes that are Sour Patch Kid flavored intentionally after Sour Patch Kids. So, that's a program that we do to all of our sixth grade kids.
I kind of figured it was something like that.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Thank you.
I have one more quick one on number 12. So, the action and emergency plans written last year 54, this year 69. Is that cumulative or do you have to start from scratch at the beginning of each year?
We start from scratch at the beginning of every year. Then you do doctor's orders and a new health plan every single year. So, that is what we do the first two weeks of our school service. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo the thanks to Shelley and Melissa for their presentation today. But the work that they do is incredibly important. They do it pretty well, so.
Thank you so much. And we also want to thank all the people at the office in every building.
And we also want to thank all the people at the office and every building who comes to help them. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Lance, I think? Yep, Lance, you're next with the MREC report.
We have everybody next. I'm going to go through our yearly self-year review that we don't call national, it's a special. Right now, we're currently in our spring summer stuff, so we're getting ready to finish up with our baseball softball programs, third, third grade, through eighth grade, as well as our four K through second grade stuff. Third grade, eighth grade just ended up last weekend. They're up here tournament for Quack County. And the fourth grade, I'm sorry, four K through second grade will be done this week on Friday. So we're going to finish up on Friday with that. We still participate in third and eighth grade Quack County League. We've done that for many years now. We'll do that. It's pretty fit for us, you know, keeps us competitive and gets us help personally, all the teams you compete such that not just help teams, so. And then four, four K through second grade is all in-house stuff. Moving on down here, our swim lessons, we're in the middle of our swim lessons as well. We are in our third session in the second week of the July seventh through the seventeenth. We've got our first two sessions done. We have one more to go. It starts next Monday and we've got it July thirty-first. With that, we won't do a fifth one. We have a lot of kids that are going to start going to education center, starting to exit colleges and stuff that our staff will diminish there. We won't have enough to really be successful and keep it safe as much as we want to, so. We won't have a fifth one. Our numbers degrade all year, all summer with that. They've been full, every session's a pretty full, if not always full, with waiting lessons at times. But that should be switched with the sessions. We want the four sessions in the morning, four sessions in the afternoon. And it's going to be huge success for us. We've been able to get more people and pool and more, more opportunities for kids to have more swim lessons. We've got a lot of kids that noticed this year that do doubles, that they want in the morning and one in the afternoon. So we'll figure it that way. So moving on, we do have our rec Ireland stuff as well, too. That will be finished up here at the end of the year. We had, we had four meets, we have one where we go with that, and then that season will be done. We do our swim times for public. That will go through August. We do Tuesdays, Thursdays, one fifteen and two forty-five. That varies with enrollment type people. It just, it can be from smalls, three, four people up to twenty, it just depends on if it's hot, rainy, I'd say this stuff. So if it's a nice day or a rainy holiday, which I were pretty, pretty slow because people were busy doing stuff by stuff. But when we were out there for a few days, we were pretty full for that. So in the fall, we will be doing our flag football again. We started our registration then on July seventh. That'll be signed up. We will participate in Quack County with that. The same grade levels will be the break zone. The K, K third grade will be in-house league. The second, third grade, fourth, fifth grade will be Quack Counties. We do a sixth grade league. We haven't done a sixth grade. We operate, but we haven't done it. We don't have enough support for that. A lot, a lot of kids start going to tackle football at that age level. But we operate just in case, we never know, that would be in-house because in the Quack County, sixth grade is kind of where we've got our offense for tackle, not, not teams go. Or they do a hybrid, they call it, where you gotta buy the helmet shoulder pads and then you do the flags. That's a pretty, pretty, pretty pensive or pretty expensive fee to get into, and I offer they want to tackle that, so, with that one. But that will be that. And then in the fall, fall winter, we'll do our MREC dance. That is crazy, crazy successful. People love it. Our numbers keep jumping. I can't think Chelsea or Manny or Dance instructors enough. They're wonderful people and they, the people love them. So we are up to one hundred and sixty-five students in that, and we have to figure out how to probably make the dance set up here because it's just, it's a pack toss and it's a, it's a paper ticket. So, so we'll probably end up going to two different sessions, the morning and afternoon for that to be everybody there. This last year, we had a limited ticket sale for people, so. Can't talk enough about the MREC dance and how well it's done for us when we went to a league a few years ago, so. We also did a volleyball camp with Coach Keenan at the high school. That was also very successful for us. And I was just kind of willing to talk in with Katie and seeing kind of what we want to do, and it was a great success. And it's, it's got girls into playing volleyball more often, and I, and I'll talk about later about trying to do some work for that. But that'll be another successful thing, I believe, with Katie in the fall, doing that again for that, so. Moving on there for the year-round activities, we still do our lap swim for mornings and evenings. We also, and I had, I typed one here that was just going to call for me and I didn't catch it, was that we already do the morning swim on Saturday mornings. And we, we do that at seven thirty, eight thirty. And Saturday mornings, we do it, we do it now year-round. So and then, and, uh, in October, we'll start up again, I'm sorry, September, we'll start up our waters and we'll take the summers off for Saturday morning stuff. But right now, it is, we are four days a week, two hours, five, seven mornings, as well as Saturday mornings at seven thirty, eight thirty. Our water zoom ball, water aerobics, they need two, two times a week, three times a week with zoom ball on Saturdays, and then pool parties still on weekends. That's a little slow right now because obviously summer, but that'll pick up once school gets back and where it's here for us. And then we still do our partnership with the Marshals Studio here in town, and we will do that fall, September, fall, spring sessions in October, February. And then moving on, for our new activities we want to do is the volleyball. There's a merit league called, and it's, I'm sorry, metal league called, and it's a community-based rec level type volleyball games that, that we can get into. I would try it last year, it just didn't work out with timing when, when we started figuring out what we wanted to do. But that's something we really want to hit with, and it'd be for fifth through eighth grade. They would, we have our own team that we play surrounding communities, kind of like Quack County, but it's not, it'd be more Cambridge and Jefferson and that kind of stuff, so. And then the tumbling gymnastics class, we want to, I really want to try to figure that one out. Last few years, our instructors and passes not been able to do it, just been too busy. But that's always getting emails and phone calls about that, so I want to figure out how to get that going again. And then apparent some lessons, we have a lot of questions about that and try to figure that out with who's got to go and during the thirty, the fourteen months, so.
Thank you. Questions?
I'll just throw the thank you lines. There's a lot on here. I think the one of the things that catches my eye is the numbers, participants, and that the community is getting a lot of anger about kind of this program. When I look at like, if you've ever been by Schilberg on Monday or Tuesday, I think is when they play T-ball or whatever, it's crazy. And there's two hundred and some kids playing, that's with a mom or a dad there, that makes a lot of people in. So organizing that is no small feat. And the other thing that caught my eye was the, the swim lesson participant of over four hundred. And I know a big part of that is, partly you guys take time out of just the lessons and teach safety for a week and, you know, take care of yourself in the water. And that's four hundred of our community kids this summer that got trained how to be safe in the water. That's, that's huge. So kudos to you and a few of your lifeguards that I've met are amazing. And that's tone at the top, so thank you for organizing that and making that happen. It's good stuff.
I have friends who have kids in the dance program and they rave. They love that program. Yeah, they're involved.
Thanks a lot, Lance. Thank you, guys.
Any other, wait, any other questions? Or is John just going to say something?
I was gonna, when did the dance program start? Was that two or three years ago?
It was like, yeah, two years, it's like, uh, two years ago. And we, we were like, first year, we were around a hundred, and that was just crazy. We even got, I talked to Chelsea about it, we had the, Adrian, we had an adult class that tried it and asked people. So it's like, you're doing it.
I remember, MREC program employs a lot of folks, including some of our students that, that were for the MREC program, and Lance does a great job coordinating that, so thank Lance, but also thank all of our folks that worked with all of those different programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six student and family handbook. Who's studying? Which one is the four K exam book?
Yeah, we have, all three of the handbooks are, are board docs. We weren't going to have the principals go through the whole thing, obviously, there's, there's very lengthy documents, but principals are here to answer any questions that board members might have. There were a few changes, and I can highlight the main areas of change. Let me pull that up here quickly. The, at the elementaries, the most significant change was some language around homework. In the past, there had been a statement about homework expectations of ten minutes for each year students are in school. For instance, second grade would expect twenty minutes of homework, sixth grade sixty minutes of homework. And we felt that that wasn't what really was typically happening, so they, they changed that to more of a description of what homework is for. It's practice, it's not punitive, it's an opportunity for chance to practice what they're learning in class, and get some reinforcement at home and bring those skills back to school. At the middle school, there weren't any changes from the previous handbook. And at the high school, they tightened up some procedures for student cell phone use in classrooms, and also added a section on AI and academic honesty, because that's a topic that's, that's very important right now. And then overall, there were some changes reflected in the Title IX references to mirror our policy on that topic. If there are questions, are any of the specific ones that the principals can come up and answer us?
Jeremy, if you would mind, I think more for the public, those that are watching the cell phone, so that if we can kind of clarify what that change would have been.
Well, and really, the, in a lot of ways, there's not a changed policy. Cell phones have never been allowed in the classroom. We are tightening up, but some of the expectations are in classrooms, so in, in some of the procedures. For example, there's going to be cell phone caddies in every classroom, but sometimes teachers chose to use those, and some people are going to utilize them more now, where those have actually happened. And so it will be installed in every classroom before the, before the school year starts. So it, it's going to be a renewed expectation of what the focus in class is supposed to be, and working with our staff as well. So if, for some students may feel like this is new, technically they, they weren't allowed before, but so how we are enforcing that is...
Consistency is, is great as well for those students, so, thank you. I was just to get a little clarity on, it's a fifty-six page document.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of...
Thank you.
Oh, well, Jeremy, any other questions? Anyone should go with them. Any other question?
I don't have a question for Jeremy necessarily, but on some of these where it links to the policies, Rich, you know, it takes it to board docs, just the policies page. Can we deep link it right into that specific policy if you know, or can find that out?
I can.
The other thing is, some of these links, it takes...
I know. We, we, we give the title, we give the number of the policy, but we can't link, so which we can't link to the website or the board doc.
Directly, okay. And then some of the other ones, I think it was the middle school one, it had like the athletics page, whatever. It takes you off of this document. Is there any way to open that in a new tab versus, I think it depends on how that link is probably included, but not urgent, but I think it'd be something that would be helpful. So you don't lose that page.
Well, you're talking about that. Not all board policies are linked. Some have a record, some don't. And so it's just a, doing a search and making sure.
You'll check on that both, most effective way that we can link and make sure we're consistent in how we advise that.
Any other questions? Uh, thank you. Those are interesting to read. You read all three of them in a row. Yeah. Thank you for all the work on those. We're going to move on to new business and lots, state budget.
Well, speaking of interesting, so, yes, I wanted to come up tonight, I saw the last time we were here, we weren't sure what the state budget was going to be, and to be perfectly honest, I didn't anticipate we would have resolution before this board meeting, but here we are. The state budget was adopted on July third. It reflected a lot of what we had been hearing, was a compromise between the governor's office and the legislature. And in the memo here tonight, I've listed out what we know, because believe it or not, we're still learning things about the budget after since time, but under the revenue limits and general school aids, the three hundred and twenty-five dollars per pupil increase is exactly what we expected. That's the current state law. There will be no increase in the lower revenue ceiling, and the general appropriation inside. This was a bit of a surprise, even for those of us who are watching this closely. There is no increase whatsoever to the general pool for the next two years. In all of the state budget history that I can find, I have not been able to find a state budget where there was not a decent increase in general appropriations in one of those two years. So because of this, a lot of the estimates we saw on July first might actually hold some water by the time we get to October, but not going to be exactly the same. But according to the DPI, approximately two-thirds of all districts process this constancy decrease in general, at least in the fall. Our AEB estimate right now is relatively flat based on our spending profile. If you recall, we are at the low revenue ceiling, with only increases of three twenty-five the last two years, and changed our revenue limit. We are one of the lowest spending districts in the entire state. Compare that to our property growth and value, which we stand today, and we are relatively neutral compared to other state AEB programs set in there. Under county work aid program, this is one of the largest changes that was touted in the state budget and negotiations. In the fall, last fall, there was requests of upwards of sixty percent for special education reimbursements. Prior to the last board meeting, we had an estimate of thirty-five to thirty-seven and a half of the thing going on there. The compromise that came through after that was forty-two and forty-five percent in the next two years. I do want to put some caution on reliance on those numbers. The last many, many state budgets has had a some certain appropriation for special education have been created. What that means in simple terms is the state puts a pot of money aside for a particular program, this is special education reimbursement. And they estimate what that pot will create as a reimbursement rate based on what they say estimated cost would be for all special education costs across the state. The last couple of years, that number has been low. Back this past year, we were full of the state budget for twenty-three, twenty-five, revenue at thirty-three point three percent. And the last June payment, the odds indicated that our final reimbursement rate is just under thirty point six percent. Per pupil A, the per pupil A is still at seven hundred and forty-two dollars per pupil. This has been the case since the nineteen-twenty school year. The per pupil A program was enacted shortly after Act Ten of twelve or so years ago, and did see some increases for those years, but since nineteen-twenty has been static and not changed. Under high-cost special education A, this is another item in the state budget that was highly publicized. The high-cost special education program provides reimbursement for excess cost of any special education student that has a higher than thirty thousand dollar cost per year. The reimbursement rates for next year, twenty-five, twenty-six is one hundred and fifty percent. It will be ninety percent for twenty-six, twenty-seven. While those are very high percentages, I do want to indicate that the high-cost special education program serves less than half a percent to all special education students statewide. And for the school district of Milton, this will have minimal impact as it would depend on having used the access costs for year. Hopefully that will happen. Open enrollment private school vouchers, there was a significant increase in payments in these areas. The open enrollment payment for this coming year has increased eleven forty or one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. This is a very high increase and will have changed the dynamic of our open enrollment dollar calculated, while it will incur increase in our allocation in the short term. Keep in mind that this trend could change in time and does not indicate windfall or a source of new revenue in this district for a sustainable period. The voucher program also saw a significant increase of six hundred and forty dollars this coming year and four hundred and twenty-eight year two. This, however, will have a big impact on the budget and we did not estimate it would elevate it to this high, but the voucher intended total increase of eleven fourteen percent each year to five hundred in the next two years. And those will have the proper taxes that will be the bonus for this year. Better funding is probably the biggest question mark left on the table. We started hearing at the end of June that many federal grant programs were under review. We don't exactly know what that means at this point. We've heard that there is some focus on teacher training, indicating Title II A, English language supports are Title III, and academic enrichment, Title IV, might be the most underserved at the moment. While these are certainly not zero dollar allocations in schools that they're going to, the important thing I want everyone to hear to know, Jeremy, anyone who's listening, is we are not currently engaging in any program reductions or stoppage of these programs while we're waiting for clear commission. I will be planning to schedule a short, just as I already knew, two finance committee meeting at the end of July between the second meeting and the first meeting in August to discuss how this is going to shake out for the SPM budget before we get to the end of the year. We'll keep more information in the program. That's what we know with state budget.
Questions? Thank you for that. Some of those were helpful. Discussion possible actions against academic standards.
Good evening. This is the standard over here annually. The district is recommending the adoption of, based on the standards that you, of the academic standards that we use for the 25, 26 school year. So that was sharing with the links, the different standards within the different board. Before next year. So this, based on the state statute, this will be presented in public notice from the school board and then a recommendation to adopt.
Questions, comments?
Julie, are there any changes to this from previous years?
No, we just added some more around the SCL, some other standards that we use. Because the actual published notices around ELLA, math, science, social studies, but we felt that we wanted to share all of the areas, the content areas of the standard that we use. Do we have any more?
I would move to approve the student academic standards for 2025, 26 as they have been presented.
Okay. And a motion from your second from, you are pointing at each other last night.
I didn't get it.
I'm going to give it to Tracy.
A motion from your second from Tracy. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Up for the same time. Motion carries. Update on new 25, 26 open enrollment students.
Yeah, you can see the attachment there. I will walk through some things with that. From early February, February 3rd until April 30th, the state opens the window for applications for open enrollment in school districts for the coming year. And then after April 30th, that closes until July 1st when the alternative application window opens. So what we do is we compile any applicants for either open enrollment in or open enrollment out for the coming year. These are new open enrollment students. They're not students that have already been open and rolling in or out. And I'll walk you through the document. This data is as of July 10th, so Thursday last week. And it does not include any new open enrollment students who applied since that alternative window opened on July 1st. We have had a few both in and out since that time. Starting on that top table, that's open enrollment in by each grade level. The column that says new open enrollment applications submitted for this year, you can see that there were 85 of those. That isn't the number of students that will be coming through open enrollment because they apply and then school districts look at their policies around admitting students. We shared earlier that we had some students that applied who are on an IEP in areas where we don't have space. And we follow our policy that we had to turn some of those students down. And then other families apply and then they decide, even if they are approved, they decide that they aren't going to go to that school district, either to stay at their original resident district or enroll to a different district. In that next column though, it has that total by grade level of those new applications, the enrollment of them. So of those 85 applications submitted, we have 67 students that will be enrolling. You can see both in the applications and the enrollment, a large majority of those are in 4K in kindergarten. And that's not unusual at all that oftentimes families that decide to open and roll into or out of school district will do it as the student is starting school. But you can also see at the other grade levels, we have, I guess, one level we don't have anyone, but up to five students at some of the other grade levels. The next column is the number of returning open enrollment students who are in our schools this past year and they are ruled up to the next grade. So for instance, if you look at 12th grade, it says 33. Those are students who were 11th graders this past year that will be in 12th grade for the coming year. And then we add those new 67 students to the 400 returning. You can see the 467 anticipated open enrollment in students. That, of course, is projected because that students could change their mind. They could move into the school district and that may belong to be open and roll in. But that's kind of where we stand for open enrollment students for the coming year. The table below that is all open and roll out. The same format that first columnized the number of applications, you can see that there were 65 of those. Most of those at 4K and, but also a larger number at ninth grade. And I made a note on the bottom that oftentimes at 4K, those are families that base their enrollment for 4K on where they have available wraparound care. So we do see every year a larger group of open and roll out at 4K. And then ninth grade is typically students that have attended curricular school through eighth grade and then that school doesn't offer high school grades. So then they would, they live in our district, but they're open and rolling to a different district for ninth grade. So of those 65, it is also important to note that only two of those 65 are students who are with us this past year and are open and rolling out of our district. Otherwise, they're incoming 4Kers, they're those ninth graders that have been in curricular schools. Oftentimes, out of the rest of the students, it will be families that lived in another district, were residents in that other district, had always attended school there, and they recently moved into our district, but they want to continue to finish out their schooling in the school district where they have started. We don't have data for enrollment of those 65 because we don't always hear from them until they show up in the fall on whether they're for sure going to be attending another school or not. So we'll have that number in the third Friday column. This past year, as we roll those students up from last year to this year, we have 315 open and roll out. When we add those 65 to that, if all 65 do end up open and rolling out, that would put us at 380 open and roll out students for the coming year. And then I added a couple of notes on the bottom. At this point in the year, it's very much a projection because we will always have families moving in and out of the school district over the summer months. We also anticipate kindergarten typically grows and 4K typically grows during July and August. Families still are registering. But right now, for K through three, our average class size projection for this coming year is 21.5 students per classroom, which is down a shade from last year. It ranges from 18 at kindergarten at East to a high of 24, 25 on average for third grade at West. And our projected class, average class size for Northside for grades four through six is 26.9 students, which is up a shade from last year. We don't typically do a projected average class size for the middle school and high school because it depends on what courses those students take with some interactive classes. There's not really a students who are assigned to a specific class for the full day like there is with our elementary school. So our formal count for this coming year, we come with that third Friday count in September. We get that back and usually report that back to the board at the first board meeting in October. But as we start of the school year, I usually give the board an update on where we are with enrollment at that second board meeting in August because it would be dialed in better than than we are now.
Rich, so you're making estimates based on what you know from district? Because we, this district hasn't even opened up the enrollment yet. So as you're looking at where you think the class sizes will be moving forward, you're just using past. So the new construction that's in some of the areas could possibly blow up your productions in there, right?
Yeah, we take that into account. We, our enrollment window is in the spring. So that has already taken place.
For open, I'm talking about district.
Yeah, for district too.
Yeah.
For enrollment for districts. So we always take in place the students that we have in place unless, unless or until we hear. Otherwise, we assume that they're coming back and typically families are good about letting us know if they move, but not always, and they're not required to. Sometimes we hear from the district where they end up moving to. So it's always a bit of an estimate and there's, it always changes this time of year. You mentioned new housing. So we anticipate that our largest growth is going to be in 4K and kindergarten between now and the start of the year because that's always the case.
To clarify that point, so if somebody moves to the district a week before school starts, I mean, they're guaranteed a spot at the school that's closest to where they live or is it still?
Just want to clarify that it's not always the closest to where they live, it's the attendance area that they're in. And there may be some circumstances where a student might be in one attendance area even though they're closer to another.
Sure, okay. Another question if I may. The Northside 26.9 students projected average. What's our high threshold? Like where do we start to look at possibly needing another section or whatever?
Yeah, that's, that's getting close to where we would look at adding sections at Northside. I think I'm comfortable with where we are for this coming year, but we continue to monitor as the summer goes on.
Oh, I'm on that. I know we talked about earlier in the year that I think we added something at the middle school because this sixth grade class moved and the fifth. So it's not, it's in the average, I think, too, but each class is completely different. I think the fifth is smaller than the current sixth that's moving to seventh.
Yes, as we make those projections, we always look at changes at each school because, and at each level because as, one example is if we have a large third grade class that's moving into fourth grade and if that's bigger than the sixth grade class that's moving out of Northside, then we have, then we'd be bigger at Northside. And we always look at that. We run our projections, we look at those ratios and allocate staffing to the principals based on what those projections are. But we also always look at changes as those are happening. If the board remembers we brought an additional teacher at kindergarten for the coming year because our kindergarten enrollment was already starting to grow and we anticipate that it would continue to. So we built in a little bit of buffer at kindergarten for this coming year. At all of our schools, we have space for the likely addition of more kindergarten students.
Other questions?
I just had one comment I would make, and I think I made similar comments a year ago. Anybody in the room that's had a little bit of a history in the district knows that this used to be kind of flipped the other way. These numbers, you've probably not seen them in this detail sometimes. But we used to be a negative open enrollment district to the tune of about 100 students. And I was on some committee work 20 years ago that looked at how do we fix that? And there is no single answer, of course. Families and students choose us or don't choose us based on a number of factors, some of which you can't control. However, I think the board, the district, the staff, the parents, the community should feel really, really proud about moving that needle because that is, if you know how schools function, that is monumentally hard to change. And we have, and as Ross indicated, we're not going to bank on this trend continuing. We can't put a fine number on how many kids it is, but we have tipped over the teeter totter, if you will. We were negative, we are now positive. It has a little bit of a financial advantage to us, that's good. But I think, I just wanted to reiterate the point of where we used to be compared to where we are. We should all be proud of that and own it. That is hard to do and kudos to everybody that has helped move that needle. So I just wanted to echo that.
And it's even bigger because there's some that we couldn't take. So the needle, what if it even bigger, how do we be able to take those? So again, thank you.
Anything else? Right, thank you so much for the detail. Appreciate that and answering the questions. If we will move on to miscellaneous 6A, I would entertain a motion on this staffing report.
I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented.
And a motion from John, a second from Ed. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Up for the same time. All right, we are on gifts and donations.
So make a motion to approve the gifts and donations.
And a motion from Tracy. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, same time. Motion carries. Meeting dates.
We have a few different things coming out. I'll highlight some things throughout the rest of July and into August. We have tomorrow night's school finance and budget meetings. It's school finance roadmap. That is at 6:30 PM here at PDC. And then next week, Tuesday, we have a governance committee meeting. That's Tuesday the 22nd, also at 6:30 here in PDC. We have an HR committee meeting on Wednesday of next week at 12:30. That will be in the first floor conference room. We have our next regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday, July 28th at 6:30. We have that evening a data workshop which will follow the regularly scheduled board meeting next July 28th after our regular meeting. We have a couple of things that aren't committee or board meetings that board members are invited to attend. I guess one of those is Milton High School has a student council breakfast that board members are invited to. So we'll be posting that. That's on August 7th at 7:30 AM at the high school. We have our board development session on Wednesday, August 20th at 6:30 PM. That will be here in the PDC. And then our regularly scheduled board meetings in August are on August 11th and the 25th, pulled at 6:30. And that second one, August 25th, is also the evening of our annual meeting, which will follow the regularly scheduled meeting.
Not a question, but a comment. Could you just repeat that first event you said that is tomorrow? It's very important that a lot of people come to, like the time and the name of it again.
And before I do that, we also are looking, Ross mentioned it, but we're looking to schedule a finance committee meeting between the second board meeting in July and the first board meeting in August. We'll reach out by email to send out some potential dates for that. That first item that John mentioned is our school finance roadmap. That is tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM and it's open to the public. We are sent emails out and Carrie, it's been a lot of social media blasts on that topic. I think one included Ross and some kittens. I think I saw actors. We're, I would say is the word that I heard most often about it. But we encourage community members to attend. We won't livestream it, but we will record it and it will be available. But the intent is to continue dialogue with our community members about school finance across the state or the impact both the current state budget and school finance in general has on our school district and our community. So it'll be a short presentation followed by a conversation, questions and answers.
And I would just encourage all of the board members to consider attending the finance committee meeting. It'll be a lot with the state budget at that meeting. It would be helpful if we all, if we will attend it as possible. And then I would also like to thank Carrie. We have this fancy new setup, which has distracted me several times because there's so many beautiful images of us right in front of us. And so thank you for that setup. Appreciate it. Anything else?
Can we, I was also, I will finance, can we get invited to that soon? Because I will calendar it wrong for sure, if I do myself.
Make sure, I'll give it to you personally as we set on it.
I'm sorry, just ask me, add us to the calendar event for the finance committee.
Yes, we have a board to that, to that calendar.
We haven't set that date yet. We'll do, we'll get that out. I'll, I'll just, I'll get it wrong if I do myself.
All right, anything else?
One more thing I should mention. I wanted to congratulate and thank and recognize Annette and John. Both attended Waspe's Summer Learning Symposium Friday and Saturday up in Stevens Point. I was actually part of the panel that did that and I did a setup a number of months ago following something I did in Milwaukee. But it was great to see them up there and our district was well, well represented and I hope they learned a lot.
Well, I better put it up on next agenda for us to do a short report out of this, what things we learned. So we'll definitely be sharing some lessons learned from that. It really was a wonderful budget. I would echo Joe's advice. Really good. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would wait here.
Tracy.
A second then.
A second from Rick. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Up for the same time.